Good evening and welcome to the Village of Suffolk Village Board Meeting. Today is July 7th and it is now 7:05 PM. If you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as we always do, let us remain standing and think about our servicemen and women serving our country here and overseas. Thank you. May you have a seat. Yep. Okay, at this time I'd like to have a roll call vote. Mr. Barone?
Present.
Trustee Joe Megan Corrigan?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Stephen Albert?
Present.
Trustee Paul Gerard?
He was unable to make the meeting. He called me and let me know.
Okay.
He also sent an email.
Yes. Okay, here we go. The next scheduled workshop meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 28th at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Rob Magrino asked me if we could have our meetings on Mondays because it conflicts Tuesdays conflict with his schedule. So can we have the workshop on a Monday?
Okay, so we'll put forth the resolution to move, let's, let's move the original scheduled workshop here for Monday, the 27th. And then we'll have a resolution in place confirming those changes for the rest of the year. How's that sound?
Good.
Okay.
Sound good? Okay. So Ms. Paffenroth, if you can make note of that for the changes, please. Okay, and then the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on August 3rd, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Okay. Okay, Fire Department. Chief Coffer, are you available?
Yes, I'm here. How was everybody this evening?
Hi, Chief.
Good. Thank you so much for asking.
Well, I hope you guys are keeping safe. Thanks.
We are. We're trying.
Thanks for your hard work.
Anytime. That's what we're here for. Just one thing on the agenda tonight. Brianna Salmon to be accepted into the volunteer host company as a 16, 17-year-old member.
Wonderful, 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 wonderful.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll hold that on at the so we have accepting Brianna Salmon as an under 18 member of the volunteer hose company. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barone. Any discussion? I would like to say thank you and congratulate Brianna on this undertaking. That's great. We wish you the best of luck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Welcome, Brianna Salmon.
Yes, I'm so happy.
Okay.
And then just real briefly to touch on the HVAC that we discussed at the workshop.
Okay.
I was in contact with Charles Sawicki. We had blend air at the, at both firehouses actually today. They're gonna, they're gonna do what they have to do. I guess they have to do some calculations and to figure out exactly what unit would best fit the building. He did say that we are on borrowed time with the boiler, which is 30-plus years old and is rotting, which is at the hook and ladder, and one of the units at the hose company were also on borrowed time because that is rotting pretty bad as well. Apparently some work was done on, there's, there's two units at the, at the hose company. Apparently some work was done on one of them at some point, so that one's still okay.
Okay.
So it was just one of the two. So as soon as we know, I'll be in touch with Charles and we'll get something over to you guys.
Okay, sounds good.
And if nobody has any questions, that's it.
Okay. All right, Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
Good night.
This time I'd like to open it up to public participation. Mr. Janito, if we have anyone that has their hands raised?
Not at the moment, Mayor, but we could wait. Oh, here we go. Okay, we have, looks like Mr. Curly is, is here. One second, please. Let me unmute him if I could.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, how you doing, everyone, tonight? I guess I just want to talk about the, the one issue would be the pool. I know as I look at, you know, Facebook on my computer, the village has done other things for the community, such as movie nights and yoga or chair yoga. And I'm sure that the village has already learned to practice social distancing by doing these events and doing the proper things for safety. So we should already have a, have a heads up and a step ahead on what it would take for the pool. I think it's, I think it's important that you, that you use those people who already have been doing these events to help you at the pool to keep it safe and to run with the social distancing. I think it's simple. I think the children of our community deserve it. Even Rockland Lake opened up for, for people, right? And that's a much bigger venue than we have. And, and I just point out that we do movie nights in this village and we do yoga and we do all these other events. We don't have separate charges for the public to pay. That's included in their, in their, in things that we do in our recreation. So just keep on mind that I understand it has to be some charge, but let's not hit the public over the head, especially the children and the family. The children and, and the family unit are the backbone to this village. If we lose the young families moving in, we lose our village. So I, I just wanna, I, I just wanna do it not, and hope that everybody, I know there's gonna be a vote tonight, and I hope that everyone equally, you know, puts that in mind and thinks about the kids. I don't, and I, we understand safety is important. That's why you practice safety at yoga. That's why you practice safety at movie night, you know, at the movies and every other event you do, okay? So it can be done. And, and, and I, I already volunteered to donate $500 and, you know, and I, I myself haven't used the pool in 40-something years, but I will join this year to help even with that as, as an extra to, to show participation. But I, I just want you, if you vote for it, that, that everyone goes behind it as a team then. And if you don't vote for it, then, you know, I, I, I'm extremely disappointed, but as a team, as a village, as a community, I think we owe it to the, to the community and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we have Mr. Richard Gandon that would like to say something.
Okay.
Richard, are you there?
Ah, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. First of all, I just want to thank the mayor, the village board, Chief Osborne, Suffolk Police Department. The Fire Department was involved, Suffolk Recreation Department and the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce for all their efforts to make the car parade for the Suffolk High School class of 2020 such an amazing and memorable, memorable event for these students. Everybody went above and beyond and, you know, not only was it special for the students, I really think this is something that our community as a whole needed. So I, I just wanted to thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Gandon. Thanks for everyone that was involved. You're right. Everyone, it was a joint effort, you know. Once you get behind it and we have, uh, working all together, it really turns out well.
No, it was great.
And thank you for orchestrating that.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Hey, Mayor, at this time, I don't see anybody with a raised hand. If you want to give it another few seconds, just in case somebody is thinking about speaking. Yeah, and again, I don't see anybody with a raised hand, Mayor, so I believe you can close public participation.
Okay, we'll close pub, public participation at this time. Next up is Culture and Recreation, Ms. Kathy Mills.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So here's a couple of our updates. Before I start, I just wanted to say thank you to our DPW department for helping us with all of our parks and all of our facilities and it being able to let the public be at our events and our facilities. So a couple of things that we have coming up. We have chair exercise classes at the gazebo's. Those are Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays at 11:00. We have chair yoga on Zoom on Fridays. We have yoga, oh, we had yoga at the, in the evenings. We have walking club at Yorkshire Park, which we have RSVPs for all of the above that we've done. We have people responding, it's either Nancy or Elaine. We have a group going out every day, every Wednesday to walk. We keep to social distancing with the amount of people that we're allowing into the groups and the people that have been attending have been extremely pleased with the events and the programs that we've been putting on. The walking has been tremendous to people that want to get out of the house. The chair yoga and the chair exercise, I've gotten so many calls and emails for, from people that are going by and they see this happy group of seniors and adults at the gazebo. So I'm proud to say that we've been keeping that going. We have story time at the gazebo. We've been working with Ms. Jennifer from the Suffolk Library. She's been thrilled to do it. We've been thrilled to have her. That again is an RSVP. We put the word out. We accept RSVPs from people and they come to story time at the gazebo at 11 o'clock on Wednesdays. So tomorrow, which is Wednesday, we have our next story time at the gazebo. And again, I thank Ms. Jennifer from the Suffolk Library. She's, she's really been tremendous. It's an opportunity for her to meet the, to meet the residents when she hasn't been able to at the library. So it's a really great collaboration with recreation and the library. Another event that we've been working on, as we discussed, we purchased the screen for the outdoor parks and for the outdoor fields. We are going to have movie night at the gazebo again on July 16th. We're going to be showing Trolls World Tour. It's a cartoon. It's great for families. We received numerous people RSVPing for it. So we do have the maximum amount of people that have signed up for it. We have opened that up to Village of Suffolk residents. The last one that we did was phenomenal, the amount of turnout and the amount of people that came in. They were very happy to do events like this. So social distancing, we were able to do people six feet apart on the lawn. And again, families were thrilled. We had a great, a lot of happy families in the park. The next event that we have coming up, it's a collaboration with the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce and it will be on Saturday, August 1st. We're working with the Chamber and many other groups and artists and people in the village and shops. And we've had a great collaboration so far, working with each other. This event is a new one for the village. We've had park art in the park before. This is extending it a little bit to be called Suffolk Art and Dine in the Park. We want to make sure that we're including our wonderful restaurants since we have outdoor seating. We're going to be able to show artwork along the village and at the park. So we're reaching out to different groups to participate in it. Alex from the Chamber has been fantastic with social media and putting together marketing materials. So we're going further with that. So that word is just starting to go out. We put up the event page today. We have an Instagram account now that's going to be going with that event. So the, the word is getting out and we're excited for that. Suffolk Little League, the Phase Four has gone live. So we're working with the mayor on getting that to open up and to have Suffolk Little League hopefully be able to start working on their season. As we all know, everything was delayed due to COVID. So Suffolk Little League would like to start playing down at the fields and that's something we just have to work towards and get all of the necessary paperwork for that to happen. As you all know, we worked on a grant with the Rockland County Health Department and it's called Complete Streets Policy. We've been working with the Health Department on getting that completed. The end date is September, so we're trying to complete all the paperwork for that. We will have a training done via Zoom on July 21st at 11:00 AM and we will host that meeting for the trainer for Complete Streets Policy. So we're going to get that out a little bit more, but that will be our next work with the Department of Health. We've been working with the Village Hall reopening team. The working, the, one of our recreation team members has been working with the outdoor dining team, working with the local restaurants and getting them all set up to be outside dining and it's been working out very well. Some of the events that we have discussed, and this was something that I had for the workshop, but unfortunately I wasn't able to discuss it at the workshop, so I'm getting a chance to do it now. Some of the summer events that we would like to start working on are the Fishing Derby, which we did miss unfortunately due to COVID in early June. So that is something we can look at doing now that the, the group numbers are getting larger. We're able to do more events and bigger events and things that we still can socially distance. So people have been asking about the Fishing Derby. The Mawa Elks has been a great group to work with, so we're looking forward to start planning that. Summer concerts, as you know, we did have a schedule. They were supposed to be Thursdays in July. We have put that on hold as of now because we didn't want to have events that you couldn't invite more than, before it was 25, now it's 50. We wanted to be able to put on a concert where we would have more people attending the concerts. Now that more numbers are out there, we will be able to look at doing concerts, depending if it's in the budget to do that for the summer. The chalk contest that we had in the past was very well received. We're looking to do more events like that. Contest where people can do things at home and we can acknowledge them and see them and go meet with them. Again, socially distanced and some, things like that are something that we know have engaged the residents. They're thrilled to do it, so we're going to be doing more of those. And again, more activities for families and children. Where Recreation's been busy with seniors and adults and the movies at night and things that we can currently work with all of our guidelines and we're looking forward to moving on and getting more of our family events, which the village is very well known for. One of the events that we've looked at is the Easter in July. As you know, we didn't do the Easter egg hunt. We still have those empty, uh, empty eggs that we can fill. Have an event like that and that again is depending on social distancing. So we're creative. Our team has been looking at ways to work with people. We're always looking for suggestions and we look forward to whatever we have in store for us for the summer. I can't hear you, Mayor.
Thank you. The Recreation Staff has been going above their normal duties, you know, in, in regards to the reopening, registering the outdoor dining. They've been doing a great job. I want to mention Natalie Sheddler, who was involved in the Art Dining Walk, which is a great asset to us. You know, she's doing an internship here, unpaid internship, dedicating and volunteering her time like her dad did for many years here in the Village of Suffolk. Thank you, Natalie. It's going to be a great success. Natalie's studying art, the art field and going for her master's degree. So thank you, Natalie. So the Fishing Derby, Easter in July and the movies outdoors, everything is, is moving along with recreation and keeping our village residents entertained or recreated. So I don't know if anybody.
So Ed, so Ed, just wondering, when did you hire Natalie, you said?
She's not hired. She's volunteering her time.
Right, right. So when, when did that happen, uh, happen as an intern?
Well, it's not formally an intern. It's just volunteering her time. I'm considering an intern. She's probably going to utilize, use that on a resume for herself that she helped institute a, a art and dine through the village.
That would have been a great thing to share with the board. That's very nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's it for me now, Mayor, unless there's any other questions or anything for me.
Well, we have the board discussion and summary of the 2020 Suffolk Pool and the operational expenses, the summer season, you know, and all of that information. Does the board have any questions for Kathy in regards to that? What's on the agenda?
You know, I read Kathy's report. She feels confident that the, if the pool opens, that it could run as responsibly as possible to prevent the spread of COVID.
Yes, I agree. I think all the work Kathy's put into it to ensure that the residents are safe. She and Mike put all the numbers together and I, I thank them both for all the hard work and I think it was a wonderful job.
So I think we should invite the public to register for the pool if they like. And if by Saturday at 5:00, there's enough interest that the pool can be opened, that we open the pool.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so you want to, you want to give the public the opportunity to show, express their interest or, or register to sign up for by Saturday at 5:00 and?
So they could start signing up tomorrow.
Right.
They have all day tomorrow, all day, Thursday, Friday, and by the end of the day on Saturday, if there is pent-up demand for people to want to use the pool, then they'll come out in droves.
Right.
And if the amount of people who've registered for the pool meet the pool's budget, then we can open the pool.
So is that the major concern? Is the budgetary restraints that we have in place? Or are we discussing, you know, keeping the, the COVID and the coronavirus in mind?
Both of them.
Both of them.
Okay.
Obviously, we wouldn't open unless we could make sure that we could keep everybody safe because that, safety first, you know, that, that's.
We can't make sure we can keep people safe, but we can make sure that we follow the CDC guidelines. And Kathy's report made many things that the CDC said, this is what you need to do to have a pool open during COVID. And I feel that we would be doing our duty in following those guidelines and give the villagers their choice if they did want to join the pool.
Right.
So we're keeping it safe and we're staying within the village budget. Both can happen.
Okay.
At this point, essentially, it's, it's, it's a, we're lobbing it back to the public to make sure that they do in fact have interest because many have expressed interest, but some have, some have not. So we don't know.
Okay. Okay, so do you want to move forward with the resolution of the reopening pool with the caveat in it or?
I would.
Yes, but I also think that we need to start preparing to open the pool and that we shouldn't wait to start preparing and doing some things to get the pool ready that would make sense.
Okay, so start preparing. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with the opening of the pool and then based on the numbers on Saturday, we'll really make that determination if we're going to move forward.
Correct.
I agree.
I mean, obviously, I, I don't think we should do anything before Saturday that sort of is going to cost a fortune to do, you know, until we really assess the public's opinion on this.
No, but there's plenty to do prior to Saturday that can't be done and we can start, we can start doing a lot of tasks.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay.
Now, how will the people register? We have to have a way. Is it a website or is it an email? Do they have to send an email to a certain address?
Kathy is going to speak to those points. Kathy?
So now that I'm finding out that we will register via email or via online, we will be sending out a constant contact email tomorrow to all the Village of Suffolk residents that we have contacts for. We will also put it on Facebook for registration and we will do our best to get everybody that we possibly can.
Is it possible to set up a time where there could be a booth out in front of Village Hall where people could drive up and hand you their check?
That is, that is something I was thinking about at another point. I would suggest even if we're going to actually take hard copy registrations, we could set over, we could set up over at the gazebo so people could walk to us. We could have a table between us. We would be able to meet the people because the registration process requires identification, which we've always had two forms of ID. We have Village of Suffolk residency requirements. So that I would suggest if we're going to do any in-person, that we would set up over at the community center outside. I'm saying gazebo, but it could be outside the community center parking lot, whichever the most, you know, efficient spot would be. That's up to your, that's up to your group if we want to do this in person or if everything will be done online. I, I.
Yeah.
I might share it in person.
Can we do almost, can we almost do both if need be?
Yes, of course.
I'm sorry, what was that? Hold on, I'm sorry. Ms. Corrigan, what was that?
Oh, I was just asking if it was possible that perhaps we give both options.
The in-person and the?
And online.
We could do that.
What's the difference, Kathy? Like, what's the difference between, I mean, I understand the difference between it, but what would be the difference in, in, in all online registration? Like, I mean, that would be a simpler task, I would imagine, than setting up?
Because some people don't have, because some people don't have scanners at home. So how would they scan in their information? And really, the seniors don't, you know, they're not always 100% on, you know, the internet, right? So, you know.
Okay, that's fair.
It, it would be nice to give the, give everybody a safe, healthy option, you know.
Yes, we are available to do that. And that, that, Mayor, to answer your question, that's what I was going to say. For us to get stuff, to get documents by email, people would have to be able to scan their license, scan their utility bill or other items that we would require. So that would be something that we can do online. We can do, tomorrow's Wednesday, we could set it up right away. We'll put the word out as soon as possible. We'll start setting up over at the community center tomorrow afternoon, Thursday and Friday. And we'll put as much energy.
And what is the, what, what, what type of pass are you going to generate to give? Are you going to give a pass?
No, this is something we've talked about before. Because we don't have the money, because we didn't have the budget, we did not renew our pool application. So we will work with the carbon copies that we've had. It's a three-page document. We would have that. One copy will be kept at the pool. So people that forget theirs when they come in would have that as their backup, which has always been. They just physically will not get an actual pool pass this year. Once the registration is done, we will put together information by Excel spreadsheet and that will be the sign-ups and the registrations for the year. And this, if I, if I'm just, just like to follow up with it, we are only opening this to Village of Suffolk residents. And if I'm correct, we're not allowing any guests to come to the pool this year. So if you don't sign up, you're children that you don't want to get a full pass for the year, you wouldn't be able to bring them as a guest. So it's either all or nothing for each family. I just wanted to, just to bring that out because sometimes people know that their kids aren't going to be able to go the whole season and they wouldn't sign them up for the entire summer. This year, it will be required to everybody that signed up would be allowed and nobody that, somebody that didn't sign up would not be allowed.
And we should also be sure to alert people that this would be a shortened season.
Correct.
Well, yes.
And also, just to, just to chime in, the majority of people, I think, these days have cell phones with cameras built in, even if they're not smartphones. I think a lot of phones do have cameras. So I think many people can probably photograph with their camera phone, whether it's a license or utility bill or whatever. I would think majority of people can do that, that way as well.
That's true. That's good.
And everyone needs to be aware that the registration would include signing a waiver that the village is not liable for the spread of COVID.
Right, and Richard Glucko already provided that to us.
We have all of that documentation, yes.
Now, we also need to determine as a board, what is the sufficient number of people that we can go forward with the full opening of the pool? Because if, let's just say we get 100 people that register, we know that's not enough. But what is? but what is enough? We need to kind of work that out.
Like, I think we need to make up the difference, the shortfall of the, now is $18,000, is that correct?
That's the number that we came up with today, going on a five-week pool season rather than a 10-week pool season, so residents would just have to know that they would, they would be paying, if we're not changing the pool pass fee, they would be paying the same amount from last year with the, half the time of the pool being opened.
Right, and it, and, and the shortfall, how are we going to recapture the shortfall? I guess that would be a treasurer's question.
Well, if I understand it correctly, what the board is saying is that if they get enough people to register for the pool to pay for itself essentially, then the pool would open. Right now, they're $18,000 short, so if you're not increasing the rates, then you would have to increase the number of people that buy a pass, so that, you know, and there's a mix, there's a different, I'm sorry, there's a, there's a different price for an adult versus a child and, and a senior. And Kathy is the, you were mentioning that people wouldn't necessarily buy it for their children, they would buy a guest pass when they needed to, so this would mean if somebody used to, let's say a family of four, they used to have two adults, and they would just let their children, you know, as guests as they needed, they would have to buy two, two adults and two children in order to let their children go in at any time they wanted, is that correct?
Yes, that question was for me, Michael.
Yeah, okay, yes, yes, it was, Kathy. So, so the bottom line is, since you're not changing the rates, it would mean, hoping that more people sign up for passes than you did in the past.
Now, just to add in, there are three people, or three entities, I should say, that have offered, each has offered $500 donation, so that might help defray some of the amount, it's not a lot, but maybe there's some other donors out there that would be willing to do so. But essentially, right now, 1,500 is on the table from donors, and perhaps if other donors present themselves, that would be fantastic, and allow us to open the pool, even if we're a few thousand dollars short.
Maybe we could let the donors who donated the $500 put a banner on the fence of the pool, saying that they donated $500, or that they sponsored the pool.
That would be wonderful.
That's, that's up to the board, if you want to approve that and do that, we can have banners made.
Or, yeah, we can, we can figure all that out.
Okay. All right, so we still have the shortfall, so we have to make, all right, so let's, let's make plans on opening up the pool, and?
If the, if there's enough public support for it.
If there's enough public support by Saturday at 5:00.
Now, so are the people gonna have to pay by Saturday at 5:00, or just express interest by email by Saturday at 5:00?
They're gonna have to register and pay.
Okay.
Well, if some people are on vacation, right, so we just, so by Saturday, we should know how the interest goes, and then we can make another decision from there, if we feel that it's peaked, or whether we're gonna have more people, just in case people are away, because this is the weekend after July 4th, or the week after July 4th, and a lot of people might be on vacation, I don't know where they could go, because every other state is closed, but ours, but, you know, I mean, I think that on Saturday afternoon, let's, let's all have an email shared and find out what's going on.
Joe, I just, you just brought up the idea of vacations and people being away. I just wanted to mention that for families that have been out of the state in the last couple of weeks, they are being quarantined, so they wouldn't be able to attend the pool for two weeks, so, I mean, we're looking at two weeks after that, but that, that's gonna be, take a consideration for families that are going away over the summer, they wouldn't be able to go to the pool for two weeks if they are out of state.
Yes, but every, but everybody knows those rules, right? So, I mean.
It depends on the state, it depends on the state, I think it's like.
Absolutely, Steve, but there, this, there are identified states that they would have to.
But that goes along with anything, right? They're not supposed to be going anywhere.
And that would be on the question, on the, on the questionnaire?
Right.
Okay.
I believe, I, I believe that was one of the statements that Richard Gluckel had on there, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that was, that was an excellent addition, because that wasn't in place when we first started looking at this, but yes, that would, that would take place. So if I can just confirm, so I, I can go forward as of tomorrow morning, we will get the word out as much as we possibly can via constant contact, Nixle, our Facebook.
I don't think you could use Nixle, Kathy.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would, I would check on that, but I don't think you should use Nixle, that's only for emergencies, and we really did scale back on it, so let's stick with the constant contact and the Facebook notification.
Okay, so we will say that we were having in-person registration, and I'm gonna say we'll have it over at the community center for anyone that is interested in signing up for the pool in person. We will also have online registration for those people. The other part to that is now, if we do online registration, their checks will be coming in to be bailed to Village Hall, so that will be, you know, we get an immediate registration, but the money wouldn't come till after that, so. Just keeping that in mind, but, so as of tomorrow morning, we are gonna start. Now, going back to the getting ready of the pool, that depends, I'm, I'm guessing on how much manpower we have over at the water department to start the pool, so I don't know if Charles is on here, if we can try to see where we can start that, but just want to make sure we're, we're doing our part, we'll work with water department, we'll work with DBW, and we'll go forward as, as much as we can. So now, Saturday at 5:00 PM, I will have as many numbers as I can, how would you like me to give those to you?
Kathy, Kathy, I'm sorry, before you go on, I just unmuted Charles, Charles, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm on my phone, okay. Yes, we'll start tomorrow, typically, that effort is, requires two weeks, so we'll try to do our best to, to expedite the whole process, but we can certainly start tomorrow.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay.
Just to ask a couple of questions, can residents pay by either credit card or PayPal or something like that if they're doing it online?
Michael, that's a question for you, in the past, we've only had check or cash. Michael, can we start doing online payment by credit?
Maybe for an additional fee or something, they have to pay 5% more or whatever, something like that.
Well, I'd like to, but we, we don't have that capability, that requires typically somebody, a merchant processor to handle that, so in other words, that takes some time to set up.
Yeah.
That's not available to.
What about PayPal? I mean, you could just PayPal to any email address in the world, you know?
I'm not sure how that works with getting money to the village, to be honest with you, I know that PayPal, you have to be a PayPal merchant.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if a municipality is the best venue for that.
I'm just throwing it out there, it might make it easier for residents to pay from home, especially during this environment, if there's a way to pay online, you know, and I figured PayPal is pretty generic, it's just email-based, you know, in other words, you can, you can actually email somebody money even if they don't have a PayPal account, it will go in, in trust, so to speak, to that email address, and then once they set up the account, then they can get the money.
I would have to talk to our banks on how that gets set up, because our accounts are very secured, and we have a lot of blocks on the accounts, so that people can't just tap into them, so.
Yeah.
Typically, it takes us a few days to get a merchant set up to either be able to debit or credit our account.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a big security risk doing that.
All right. I, that's fine, I'm just throwing it out there, to me, PayPal's a very safe thing for making payments.
To me, it's complicated.
Just, just getting back to confirm, as of Friday, Saturday, we said, I'm sorry, Saturday at 5:00 PM, I will have the final numbers of who has registered, or who has committed to register, and be able to send it to the board, would you like that email? How would you like?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Kathy, are you gonna have like an email address that they, that they can send this confirmation to, or is?
That'll be mine, my email.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Kathy.
Kathy, maybe there will be enough people who register by the, for the pool by Friday.
Yeah.
Right.
Everybody get out there and register.
Up to the public.
I'm even gonna join this year, and I haven't joined in 30 years, although I won't be going, so I might donate my tickets to somebody, because I just don't do bathing suits in public, it's a personal thing.
So, yeah, so we will jump on it right away tomorrow morning, get registration online and in-person.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
If we don't open the pool, we have to be able to refund everybody who paid, right?
Yes.
Michael will work out how we can handle that, I am going to suggest that was part of the thing that I, the information I sent in that document before. I thought this is something that we can decide on. There's a lot of places that are not taking cash right now, I would prefer if people are paying by check, that could curtail people, I don't know if that's the case or not, but, you know, I really would rather us not taking cash in, so the preferred way is by check, you know, and knowing that we're not doing credit cards as of right now, but.
And Kathy, for those, for those people that don't have credit cards, they've been doing it with taxes, they pay by money order, with taxes and water bills, they pay by money order, so that's a way to do it. The other thing, I think you have to, as a board, and of course, Kathy yourself, you mentioned that if the pool doesn't open, then we'd have to refund these monies, so obviously, we'd have the registrations and how much they paid, and if their checks have cleared and all that sort of thing, we, we can issue the refund.
Right.
The other side of it, though, is what happens if you open the pool two weeks later, for whatever reason, the health department says you have to close the pool due to COVID, whether somebody was discovered to have COVID in the pool, or now they just changed the regulations, are you going to refund the money if people have registered and three weeks into the five weeks of the pool being open, you, you have to close it? So, so are you going to then issue a refund to the residents, or are you going to tell them it's, the money was needed to run and operate the pool?
Can we prorate it?
Well, I imagine parts of it you could prorate, parts of it you can't, I mean, parts of it that are involved in the opening of the pool and, and the supplies that you have, of course, if you lay everybody off that was hired for that summer at that point, then you wouldn't have those salaries, so that would be a determination at the point when it happens, to determine, you know, how many more people are needed, and what's the total cost of the pool, and if we could then prorate a certain amount as a refund based on the fact that we didn't actually spend for the rest of the summer.
I think it'd be okay for us to refund them whatever excess money was available.
Well, yeah, certainly, we would do that, the, the question is.
Right.
How much, if any, excess would be available, I mean, you have a staff, but that, that is a large part of that budget, so if the staff isn't working, you're not going to pay them, and so if you, you know, it depends on what.
We'll refund that money.
Part of the season, you can refund that, assuming that your other costs that operate in the pool didn't run through the budget, so.
Right.
And that has actually brought up a good point, so now that we are looking to go ahead, I've been waiting to reach out to lifeguards, I didn't want them to commit to us if we weren't opening, so the question does arise, if we hire lifeguards for five weeks, and we do, we don't use them for the entire time, we have to let them know that ahead of time, that they could be guaranteed, they're not guaranteed to work for the summer. In the past, you know, we've never had this issue of, of saying, we're gonna hire you with hopes that we'll stay open, but we can't keep you employed, and that's gonna be tough, that's gonna be tough.
But that's everywhere, but that's absolutely everywhere.
It is.
And also, Kathy, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Joe, but just to add in, on this, on the flip side of it, you know, essentially, you have to go talking to potential lifeguards, but if we don't have enough people, we may not even be able to hire them at all, so.
You need to also go through the, the interview process, once again, I know that you have guards from last year, but we're gonna have to have that process in place also.
Yes.
Maybe it would be too hard to hire lifeguards if we didn't guarantee them their salary.
No, that's, not in today's world, if they want a job, and they want to work at the pool, and they want to participate, then they can. I mean, everybody knows right now, at this point in time, nothing's a guarantee. You know, there's nothing to say that my company doesn't shut down tomorrow, and, you know, it's gotta be closed for two weeks because someone got sick, that unfortunately is the reality of today.
Trustee Corrigan? Trustee?
Yes.
I agree with you.
Well, thank you.
I agree.
You can cross the aisle, this is great.
All right, I had to say that.
Because you didn't mean it?
No.
When you reach out, we're all happy, this is great.
Okay.
All right, so do we vote on this resolution?
Well, yeah, so we're gonna move forward, Kathy's gonna move forward, start calling the lifeguards, gather, putting together the pool opening announcement, so we need a good pool opening announcement, she had, you have all the documentations, this has been going on, so, yeah, so we have a resolution here that will need to be discussed also, authorizing the opening of the Suffering Pool for 2020 Summer Season upon attainment of sufficient funding generated through the sale of pool passes and donations by the public. You guys, you have the, you have the res, all right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so going down to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the sixth whereas, funding to operate the Suffering Pool for 2020 will be generated by the sale of Suffering in the amount of, so we would have to fill in the amount, and we're gonna keep the amounts as $80 for an adult.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm on the phone.
65 for the child. I hear somebody.
Charles, Charles, you're still unmuted, so I'll just mute Charles again.
Okay. So, $80 for an adult, 65 for a child's pass, and $2 for the senior pass. That's on the sixth whereas, now, and be it further resolved, be it therefore resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorize the sale of Suffering Pool passes, so July, that's to be determined, right?
Yes.
TBD, is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Next, to be it further resolved, the same date, sufficient funding to open the pool generated before, on or before July, what is Saturday? July 11th, is that acceptable?
Yes, but I don't think we should close pool registration on July 11th.
Hold on, I see.
It's just a gauge.
That it, that if sufficient funding to open the pool is generated on or before July 11?
Sufficient, okay, perfect, yes, thank you.
People can also register, if the pool opens, people can continue to register.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
hereby authorized open the Suffering Pool July, so that's July X, the opening of the pool, do you want to give a deadline for two weeks from tomorrow?
That would be fantastic.
Genitively?
Yes.
Two weeks from tomorrow would be the 21st of July?
Yeah.
Labor Day, Kathy, is that correct?
I'm sorry, Mayor, but tomorrow would be, would be July 22nd.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Tomorrow, yeah.
22nd. Through Labor Day, Kathy, what date do we normally close?
We do close on Labor Day, which this year would be Monday, September 7th.
Okay, so we'll put in Labor Day, September 7th. Confirmation and Dries herself in children, final review, Corrigan, yeah?
I count that as seven weeks.
Oh, hold on, yeah, I got, I have the 18,000, 18,147. So you're counting that as seven weeks, hold on, let's double check. So if you take the 27th, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
I think it's six weeks.
It's like just over six weeks, so that will change the calculation for the, for, on the spreadsheet, from five.
Yeah, but I don't, but there was a lot of stuff that was a little bit.
On the high side?
On the high side, right, but better to be high than low, so I don't know that that would really make too big of a difference.
Well, if we shy, 18,000 for the five weeks, we're at? Well, if we shy eighteen thousand for the five weeks, we're at.
If I may.
Three thousand. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, if I may, I mean, the, obviously the largest expense you have in this pool is the labor.
Salary.
So if, you know, right now you're looking at five weeks of labor with, you know, the only benefit really being the Social Security FICA. And you would have to have two more weeks of that.
Right.
To make it seven weeks or one more week to make it six. So it, I mean, we can certainly change the spreadsheet, which changes the, the, obviously the dynamics of how much has to be raised. It, it's up to the board though, whether they want to do five weeks, six weeks or seven. Originally we were doing seven and then we understood that it was to be five weeks. So.
Yeah, that's on me.
That's okay. We just, we just need to know.
You're wrong. It's on me.
Just to time.
Seven weeks, I'm sorry. Seven weeks was roughly twenty-five thousand. Five weeks was eighteen thousand. I'm rounding. So that's a difference of seven thousand. So it's going to cost you roughly another three thousand a week. Is that right, Mike, on the average?
Well, well, actually Mayor, I don't, you know, the twenty-five thousand was probably before this, these final numbers that Kathy gave me, showing the actual number of people, including those that would monitor for COVID and the disinfecting required for COVID. So what I'd prefer to do, rather than try to guess at it, is to, if the board wants, they can make a decision whether they want to do five weeks, six weeks or seven weeks. And we'll just replug it into the formula and Kathy can base that as the amount of money. It's certainly going to go up from eighteen thousand dollars. It may go to twenty-five thousand or something like that. But whatever the number is, it, it doesn't really change the principle of what you were talking about, which is we need to raise enough money between donations and actual registrations to.
Right.
Okay. So what's the board's preference here?
Yes, I would like to see what the donations and the registration looks at, you know, looks like. And then we can, you know, go from there. And two, you know, if it's, through Labor Day is kind of important, I feel. So maybe we can see if we can get a couple more donations to help make up the difference.
Yeah, but I think you still have to determine whether you want to do five, six or seven weeks because.
Through Labor Day, seven weeks?
Well, it's not seven. It's like six.
Six and a half.
Okay, so six and a half weeks.
Six and a half weeks. I'd like it to be open through Labor Day.
Yes, I would as well.
So six and a half weeks, Mike, if we can get that recalculated and then the board will, you know, will know exactly what the shortfall is and how much money we need to raise. But still, we, we're going to measure that by Saturday at five.
Right.
Right. So, so the six and a half weeks, just so I have it clear, September 7th is the end date. What's the start date to make that six and a half weeks?
That's the twenty-second, twenty-second of July, Michael.
Okay.
Mike and Kathy, I just want to chime in. I spoke to Kathy earlier. I've, I've sort of been trying to get numbers based on this and, and haven't really gotten what I want, you know, numbers. But basically in talking to Kathy, it sort of becomes apparent that if we have, say, a morning session and an afternoon session with an hour in between, that might change the amount of coverage we need as far as lifeguards. Because currently the amount of lifeguards that we have per day, which I think the number was eight or something to that effect, part of that was based on the fact that they need to take breaks. But if some of them, if, if some of them take breaks during the time period that the pool is closed, it reduces the amount of coverage you need to, to cover lifeguards while they're taking a break. So you, you may be able to get by with fewer lifeguards covering the same amount of positions. You know, all the, all the chairs, all the lifeguard chairs, head lifeguard, everything else that they do. We might be able to drop one or two lifeguards off what we normally have. Especially if we're having four additional COVID employees that you're talking about hiring to look out for, for social distancing and so on and so forth. They could do some of the other tasks as well. You know, whether it's checking pool passes, whatever the case may be. So I, I'd like Kathy to speak to that, please.
Yeah. So I know we have talked about this in the past. What I will do is once I reach out to the headguards, and I don't know who our headguards are going to be this year. The ones that we had in the past are not, they're not committed. So obviously I would need to get more, I would like to discuss more with them. You know, if we are going to close down for an hour in between, then the break rotation would be changed up absolutely. So depending on how many people are at the pool, how many stands we have up, that will depend on how many we need to have up. As we discussed, we have three at the main pool and then the, the kiddie pool. So that's four. And then we have the office. We have people checking people in. So there are at least a minimum of people that we would need with letting guards take breaks. So we just want to remember the safety of our guards. They are going to be out in the sunshine. They're going to be out in the heat. We need to make sure we're not giving up breaks completely. But Pete, Steve, I do understand what you're talking about, about lessening because we're going to have that break in between. That, that will be a factor. That will be something that we can look at doing.
Okay. So, because, because that actually greatly affect the numbers as far as the deficit that we're looking at. Because if we have less employees on, you know, seven days a week, you know, it, it's going to cut significantly into that, into that number.
I just wanted to bring up, it's something to the side of registrations. In the past, we have offered our Suffering Fire Department members access to the pool free. I just want to ensure if we are going to continue that or if we're going to change that this year.
Oh, I think that should remain in place. Our, our volunteers are truly committed to the village. So I would say yes.
Yeah, that's not even in the numbers anyway.
It is, it is not. I just wanted to make sure that everything that is part of.
Do we have any idea how many that is? I mean, nothing really matters anyway. Don't even bother. It doesn't matter.
I do have it in one of my pieces of paper here.
Don't worry about it, Kathy. It, it doesn't matter.
Yep.
Kathy?
Yes.
What is, what, like the timeframe for the break period for the lifeguards? Is there a requirement or did we just do a rotation?
They do a rotation and what we've always done is they, they go up two times of twenty minutes each and then they break. And then they take a, you know, either to the next stand or the office. So it's forty minutes up, twenty minutes down, and then continue from there.
So it's really like twenty minute break per hour or just a break from the chair?
Break from the chair.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Mayor, what, what Kathy describing to me recently was in addition to the breaks from the chair, that's not what I was discussing. I was talking about break, breaks. She said that the lifeguards typically get three twenty-minute actual breaks per, per day.
Right.
The pool day. So that's, you know, essentially they get an hour break in, in three twenty-minute intervals. So what I was suggesting was that if, you know, part, part of the coverage we have is because of those breaks so that there's enough people on the chairs. But if some of those breaks occurred during the hour where the pool would be closed in the middle of the day, that would cut down perhaps one, one head count. That's all.
Gotcha. Okay.
Which is, which is a significant savings. I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. It's, it's not insignificant.
Okay. All right. So we're, we're good on the resolution and the time, the dates and the cost. Is that correct? So I just want to.
Yes.
I believe.
So I have the resolution authorizing the opening of Suffering Pool for the 2020 Summer Season upon attainment of sufficient funding generated through the sale of pool passes and donations by the public. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion, trustee, trustee Megan Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, second.
Second, trustee Albert, any further discussion?
Yep. I was just going to suggest maybe Kathy should post, you know, say her name, I mean, her email address. So that if anyone wants to sign up tonight in advance of it being officially posted tomorrow on Constant Contact, they can, they can sign up tonight even.
Okay. So my email is C Mills, so C M I L L S at suffernny.gov. And if we're going to be looking at taking the information now, the required identification will be a driver's license or other form of photo ID. We will need to have two forms of Village of Suffering residency. And those have included cable bill, phone bill, Orange and Rockland bill, your water bill. We need to make sure that we have residents. We have asked in the past to have children's report cards. That's something that we have. And because we won't be able to see families coming in together, that will be a requirement this year as well. So two forms of ID showing residency, a driver's license or other form of ID. To, to C Mills at suffernny.gov.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, thank you so much for everything that you've done through this process.
And as, as you know, as Kathy knows, we've all been on the phone with her constantly over the last few weeks, you know, trying to get to a point where we are now. So thank you very much for dealing with all those calls, Kathy. I appreciate it.
Amazing. Thank you.
All very welcome.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Okay. Hold on. Next up, Mr. Charles Zwicki, Department of Public Works.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, very good.
Okay, good. Okay. First item, establishment of the position of clerk for the Department of Public Works and appointing Daniel Curtin effective July 7th, 2020.
Do I have the resolution establishing the position of clerk in the Department of, in the Department of DPW Administration and appointing Daniel Curtin to the position of clerk effective July 7th, 2020? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion?
Well, I, I have a couple of questions. So is there a position that Daniel Curtin will be vacating? And will that position need to be backfilled or is that position going to remain, you know, not filled?
That position will remain unencumbered in the Department of Public Works.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're not adding a position of, of cost somewhere in the budget that we do. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Zwicki. Congratulations, Daniel Curtin. Great job. She is a great asset to the Village of Suffering and the DPW. She does a tremendous amount of work. Thank you.
I agree. Next item, payment authorization for application of payment. It shows here number three. It is actually number two. So it's application of payment number two in the amount of eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents to National Water Main Cleaning Company for the Phase Two sanitary sewer abatement project.
So I have resolution authorizing payment number two to National Water Main Cleaning Company for the Phase Two Sewer Abatement Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Barone, do I have any further discussion?
This is, this is the final payment. Charles, I believe that's what you said at the workshop.
Yes, final payment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Declaration of the Village Board as the lead agency for the purpose of environmental review under SECRE for the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project.
I have the resolution declaring the Village Board as lead agency for the purpose of environmental review under SECRE for the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Corrigan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. There is the one item that came in and I apologize for that. Coming in last minute, talked to Rob Magrino. This was in regards to the same project, the Wayne Avenue project regarding the New York State DOT, what they consider a undertaking. And I'm not sure, I had some issues with my computer. I'm not sure if that made the agenda.
Yes, it did make the agenda.
Okay. And is Mr. Magrino going to speak on that?
Uh, Mr. Magrino is not present at this time.
Oh, okay. So I guess you have that resolution in front of you, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Does the board have the resolution?
Yes.
I know it was a new, it was a new item. Okay. Authorizing an undertaking for the benefit of the New York State Department of Transportation on Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Barone, any additional discussion? Charles, when do you think the undertaking will, or actually the project will start?
Yeah, we've had a couple of glitches here. And as a result of the, the project cost being larger than we've dealt with in the past, there's been a lot of additional requirements. And in, in addition with the COVID-19, we've, it's been very, very slow in trying to get response. But I, this will definitely, these couple items or some of the items that we, we're kind of holding things up. And we should, I'm going to, I have reached out to one of the directors in Poughkeepsie and he's been very helpful. I'll reach out to him again and I'm sure he'll assist us in trying to expedite the whole process once we have it, have it in place.
Okay. All right. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Police Department Chief Osborne.
Hey, Mayor and Board, thank you so much. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Right. Thank you so much. And just basics tonight, I just wanted, the only thing I really have to ask the board for is looking for a resolution to authorize a public hearing to be held Monday, August 3rd, 2020 at 7:05 PM. We're considering amendments to the code of the Village of Suffering. After 254, vehicle and traffic, update procedures for towing and empowerment of vehicles. As we spoke, Mayor and Board at the workshop, we're just apt to update our policies, particularly in regards to, you know, basically we put people on a towing list, take them off the rates, just to make sure we have everything updated. That's pretty much all the public hearings for. I spoke to Amy about it, I think Amy has the paperwork. Now we'd just like to present next meeting.
Okay.
Um, after that, just a couple of quick things, you know, initial items. In the month of June, we had six hundred and sixty-eight police calls and vultures for the month. We unfortunately had a drowning last week here in Ramapo River, which is obviously always tragic. Particularly this, this, this case because the family was on the scene when we recovered the body, which is obviously never a good scenario, but we did the best we could to treat everybody, which we always do. Officers always do with dignity and respect. And I want to thank Chief Cal for, I know is on tonight, and the fire department. The assistance with recovery efforts due to the water depth and some obstacles in the water. We needed them to remove the body with boats and divers. And I just want to thank them. Going out of their way and helping us out with that. We had some domestic violence incidents, but actually several. We had some arrests. We had one which was very serious. It was a domestic violence stabbing arrest on our dad's son. Ironically, on Father's Day. It was a Father's Day night that it happened. And we charged a individual with a very serious crime for stabbing his adult son that night. Obviously other arrests, like I said, other domestic violence arrests and other things that happened. Of the community fund, we actually just reached up our birthday drive bys. We did over ninety of them since early April. And it sounds like a little thing when we pull up to somebody's house. If they're, these cars are by two, three, four, these cars, we used to, and usually a lot of them. I mean, a lot of times leave local residents. The community members behind us with these possessions to the neighborhoods. But I got to tell you, and anybody who's seen them, I think some of you on there have seen them and part of them. They meant a lot to these families that did not have birthday parties for the children or events. And the response we had from those ninety residents was overwhelming. And I just want to tell you, little things, I thought made the difference. Once again, I commend my officers for going out there every day, caring about our community. Rich Danden was on before and makes nobody on. He did a great job setting up the high school graduation parade. Our job as the police department, we set up the route, covered all the traffic routes and the intersections. And it was absolutely fantastic. It was something that, and I know Mayor, you probably, and some of you there that night probably heard. I think the residents probably can expect this every year, which is a great thing, even though we don't have, you know, the pandemic. But I think people really appreciate. But I think people really appreciated what went on that night, so I thank you guys for that. Last but not least, our criminal justice reforms. Now, we spoke at the workshop on a good note. We are a New York State accredited agency. We are one of probably 25% of the agencies in New York State. We have over 500 police agencies in New York State. One of the 25% in that range. We're accredited, and the reason I put it up is that all these amendments in regards to use of force, um, in regards to how to handle situations, proper techniques, proper policies. We already have most of them. And we have had them, and we've been exercising and using them forever because of our accreditation policy. Jump out when I was chief. Um, back in 2009, we became accredited. Became reaccredited in 2014, and reaccredited again. It was in 19, it's every five years. It'd be accredited, but every year, we have to just resend information to them to make sure we keep up on our standards of how we operate. That's sent by Lieutenant Lockman, Officer Stewart, and Sergeant Martinez in regards to accreditation. So, I know some questions came up in regards to reforms at the workshop. Bottom line is, we'll do whatever we need to do, I spoke to and Rob Magrino mentioned, uh, during the workshop. We basically have everything in place. When the House needs to be, we will take care of it. Alright, that's pretty much all I have. If just any questions, comments, please feel free, whether it's your phone call, whatever's easy for you guys.
I just have that resolution here for the, um, authori, authorizing of a public hearing to be held August 3rd, 2020 to amend Chapter 254 of the Code of the Village of Suffering entitled Vehicle and Traffic to update procedures for towing and empowerment of vehicles. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion?
Um, I just, I just have one question. Can I get a copy of that, or can I find that somewhere online?
The, the procedures for towing?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay.
Not actually how to hook the car up to the tow truck, but what the village laws are.
Well, Joe, you want to walk into that too?
That's, maybe you could.
Is it the one that we, is it the one I did years ago, Clark?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, yeah.
We, Joe, what we're doing is updating it. There were some things I felt at the beginning of the tour, and he's, I think we should probably tighten up a little bit. This
Okay, yeah. If you could just resend that to me, that would be awesome. Thank you.
You can also find it in the village code, Joe.
Yeah, okay. I can do that too.
254.
Clark, can you give me an idea, or just a general, you know, sense of what kind of changes that you, you'd like to make to, to update it? Like, give me an example of what needs to change.
Sure, Steve. One of the things in this, Steve, which I find is a little bit hallucinatory, is regards to putting people on a toll list and taking people off. And issues occur. That was one of the big ones, Steve. Now, rates for for passenger vehicles are set by the Rockland County Consumer Protection, and I should say Division of Wastes and Measures, I think it's correctly called. Uh, Steve, for commercial vehicles, there is no regulation rate. So, those are things like that. We just want to take a good look at what we need to do, Tony's, to make sure we're compliant to protect all of us.
Okay.
That answers, Steve, is that pretty much?
Yeah, I just wanted to get the, the gist of what's, what's in store.
And any questions, you call me, any questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Chief, you're good?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board, for everything. I'm ready if you need anything.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks to the department.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so I received a letter that, uh, was asked to be read into the record. Um, this is from the PBA President, Officer William Samora. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and distinguished trustees. In the evening hours of a spring day in 2018, two of our offices responded to a report of a domestic incident in progress. Upon arrival, they investigated the incident and determined that a suspect at the scene had committed a crime and was to be arrested in accordance with New York State law. While attempting, while attempting to take place the suspect under arrest, the suspect resisted. During an ensuing violent struggle, both offices sustained serious injuries and were out of work for months. One of the officers, an experienced and decorated police sergeant, continues to battle injuries that he sustained that evening. He has had to endure surgery and painful therapy because of those injuries. Then, in the summer of 2019, two officers responded to a report of a fight in progress in a downtown bar while working a midnight shift. After responding to the fight, officers, officers were met by violent intoxicated patrons who punched them, attempted to strangle them, and most seriously, attempted to remove an officer's duty firearm, while, while stating aloud that they intended to kill him. The officers were eventually able to quell the resistance and arrest four suspects. Thankfully, neither officer was injured during the incident despite the suspect's dire intentions. Most recently, on the 21st of June, 2020, two officers responded to a domestic incident between a father and a son. Upon arrival, officers investigated and determined that a male party armed with a broken glass beer bottle had stabbed another male in the face, causing a serious physical injury. The suspect was arrested by responding officers and brought to Suffering Police Headquarters for processing. These yearly incidents are not unique. Our offices continue to respond to violent or unpredictable incidents on a routine basis. The board should also take note that there is a commonality between the three examples I provided. Only two officers were working the road at the time and were available to respond. It is not a stretch of the imagination to say that at any of these incidents, or hundreds of similar incident, incidents that our agency has responded to in recent history are dangerous and could have resulted in serious injury or death of one of our officers. It should be taken into consideration that when incidents of this type occur, our ability to respond to incidents of a similar nature in a short timeframe is degraded as officers are required to process suspects and complete a variety of tasks, including complicated virtual arraignments. The quantity of officers at our department has been allowed to dwindle from 29 full-time officers to 22 at present. One of whom continues to battle the long-term injuries I spoke of earlier. Recently, I learned through official channels that the board has set a requirement for the Chief of Police to provide an overtime report to the board monthly. I also know that as of this writing, several members of the Village Board have not accepted an open invitation from one of our lieutenants to come to the police station to see firsthand how overtime is generated and to be informed of how changes in the criminal justice system of New York State have affected our day-to-day operations. The men and women of the Suffering PBA have worked tirelessly 24 hours a day, seven days a week through the recent COVID-19 pandemic and continue to do so. Their dedication to duty has been remarkable and commendable despite the risk to their own health and the health of their family members who they leave at home when they report for duty. They display a consistent dedication to the village they so proudly serve. It is time for the Village Board to honor their commitment by increasing our full-time staffing so our members may continue to serve and protect this great village. Respectfully submitted, William M. Samora, Suffering PBA President. So, taking that letter into consideration, I believe it is definitely time to commit to increasing our full-time staffing. We cannot continue to degrade, degrade our police department or our police departments throughout New York State. We need to keep and maintain a safe and healthy environment for our residents, and that's through policing with proper staffing levels and keeping our village residents safe. So, I commend, uh, President, uh, Suffering PBA President William Samora for submitting this letter to the board, and I hope the board considers the same. Okay. Mr. Janito.
Yes, Mayor, uh, we have a few resolutions before you, and, uh, the first four are kind of, um, related. So, the very first one, and this all involves the, uh, capital project to purchase a police car and to, uh, purchase cameras for the various police cars that we have, replacing the cameras that are now, um, obsolete on those cars, on those vehicles. In any event, the, the two could be combined into one project for $115,000. And the first resolution is a bond resolution authorizing the finance of and purchase of the police vehicle and police cameras in the amount of $115,000. The Bond Council prepared the bond resolution, and it's before you now.
Okay, so the bond resol, so I have the resolution here, bond resolution of the Village of Suffering adopted June 30th to authorizing the acquisition of a police vehicle and cameras equipment, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof of $115,000, appropriating said amount for such purpose and authorizing the issuance of bonds in the amount of $115,000 to finance that appropriation. Do I have a motion? Motion. Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have any further discussion?
Mayor, you'd want a roll call vote on this, by the way.
Just for the benefit also of the public, how many years would we be paying this $115,000 over? Just wanted.
It would be over a period of three years.
Three years, thank you.
Trustee Corrigan, roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Barone?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, bond reso passes.
Thank you. The next resolution is to establish the capital project to purchase the police, uh, vehicle and cameras, and, uh, that resolution is before you. It doesn't require a roll call vote.
I have the authorization, authorization to establish capital project 2021 dash 001, police car and cameras. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes.
Thank you. The third resolution is authorizing the purchase of the police vehicle under a Westchester County contract in the amount of $49,176.50. I just want to mention to everybody as well that the actual ordering of the police vehicle or the cameras, which follows this one, uh, cannot be done until 20 days have passed since the bond resolution was advertised in the paper. There's an estoppel period of 20 days that follows the date when the ad appears in the Journal News, uh, that the public has the right to come and challenge it if they felt something unconstitutional was done in accordance with this. So, uh, again, it would be hence 20 days from the date of publication that the, uh, uh, before the police could actually order this vehicle. But any amount, that's the amount, $49,176.50, and that is under a Westchester County contract.
Michael, can you tell us what vehicle this is? Is this a, is this an SUV? Is this a car? Like, can you be more elaborate what this is?
Well, I'll let the, the police chief talk to that if you need, but it's basically a, um, it's an SUV, yes.
Okay.
Do I have the authorization, authorizing the purchase of a police vehicle? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Corrigan, any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes.
Next resolution is the authorization to purchase the, uh, cameras, and the cameras in the amount of $55,536.50. And, uh, those cameras are under an Houston-Galveston area contract. You may recall that back in September of 2019, when we were looking to purchase, um, a fire truck, the Houston-Galveston Area Council, otherwise known as HGAC, is a properly developed governmental contract, and the village part, um, adopted a resolution to participate in those contracts in order to get, um, beneficial pricing. And the cameras are actually under that contract, at least the majority of it. Uh, approximately more than $53,000 of this amount. The rest of it is some minor amounts that are not covered by the contract. But in any event, this would, um, satisfy any need that we wouldn't have to go out to bid separately, since it already is done under a governmental contract. So, that resolution is to authorize the purchase of the police cameras, and just like the police car, uh, the order could not be placed until 20 days have passed after the ad appears in the Journal News of the bond resolution.
Hey, how many cameras are covered under this?
Uh, I'll defer to the chief. Chief, if you don't mind, could you address that issue?
Yeah, I believe there's, uh, eight, I believe eight cameras for the vehicles.
Okay, and this will, uh, the other, the eight that are in those vehicles will come out. Are there any vehicles that don't have cameras currently?
All the marked units patrol vehicles have them, uh, every one of them. That's why we, that's why we have, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have the, I have the resolution authorizing the purchase of police cameras. Have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Corrigan, any further discussion?
Um, I do have one more question. I'm sorry, I should have asked the chief, uh, while he was on a second ago. Hopefully, he can answer this. Uh, are there any differences for these cameras as far as the storage requirements, or the way the footage is transferred? Or is that going to create any, uh, bottlenecks or other issues within the, uh, within the police, uh, you know, infrastructure?
Steve, on a good note, Lieutenant Lockman and Officer Stewart handle our, our, um, IT stuff, our IT, like I should say, IT network. This is actually going to be much better for us, Steve, and one of the biggest things, Steve, reasons is because what it's going to do is going to make it easier for us to read that information from the videos, which we have to send to the District Attorney's Office. Where the hardest thing for us right now we're facing is basically the, what we call the discovery, getting the information immediately to District Attorney's Officers. It's not 15 days for us, it's within like a day or two. District Attorney's have 15 days to get it to the defense, but they have to take everything we give them to that, to allow. That's why I think some of the confusion comes in. But, um, Steve, it will make it much easier, and I thank you for going there.
Good. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you.
Okay, uh, the next resolution is that in 2018, you're all familiar with the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. Uh, it turns out that we need an additional $4,500 for that project, and this covers some engineering costs that, uh, Charles Suwicky had noted to us separately to the board, I believe, as well. And any of that $4,500, uh, that would come from the General Fund as a contribution. Charles Suwicky founded in his street budget, uh, so that we're transferring the funds from the General Fund to the Capital Project Fund, $4,500.
Now, the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Capital Project Fund for Project 2018 dash 003, Wayne Avenue Sidewalk. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the final resolution before you is a, uh, an invoice from Mr. Richard Glickold, the Labor Attorney, and he, uh, for covering the period from June 3rd to June 30th in the amount of $4,032.25. And as you know, the board has requested that all outside legal counsel bills, other than bond counsel, um, go to the Village Board, uh, for their review and approval before payment.
Okay, so I have the, uh, authorizing payment of Labor Attorney invoice for professional services rendered June 3rd through June 30th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Corrigan, seconded by Trustee Barone, I believe. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Janito, I believe that the PBA President may like to say something. Do you see a hand raised? I would, I would like to allow him to speak.
We've asked him to unmute himself, so he should be available to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm all right. If I could just introduce myself, I'm William Samura, I'm the Suffolk PBA President. If I could thank the mayor for reading the letter, the reason I passed it on in that manner to be read into the record is I also serve the village as a member of the Suffolk Hook and Ladder Company number one, and there is a membership meeting tonight, and I, I serve as secretary, so I was unsure if I would be able to be two places at once, but as I was able to make arrangements to be at this meeting, which I felt was more pressing. I guess to give some context, the letter that I drafted for the distinguished board's review, the incident I wrote of in September of 2019, just, I, I was one of the two officers that responded to the, the bar fight. Someone tried to choke me, someone tried to take the firearm of my partner, who is a, a young, a young police officer at our department, who's also a military veteran. I, I, I think it's a, it's a very serious situation, I don't think I could convey to anyone what it's like to be in a, a fight for your life like that. It is not something that I take lightly, or I think should be, should be reflected upon in a light manner, and I, I have to say, I'm also a village resident, I've been a village resident the lion's share of my life, I've been to the Suffolk Pool, and I think our recreation department is outstanding. I, I have to say, I am astounded at the amount of discussion that occurred regarding the pool opening, and there was not a single word uttered about the letter that I drafted. I think that that, the, the, the officers that are in my union deserve more than, than nothing, and I, I would implore the board to reflect upon what I wrote and have a serious discussion about the manpower issues that I raised. And I appreciate everyone's time in, in listening to my comments, and I hope that everyone is safe and healthy, and that's all I have.
Thank you, and, and thank you to the PBA Union membership, thank you for bringing this to our attention. It is imperative that the board sits and does reflect on your letter, and being in, in a fight for your life is something that no one ever wants to be in. As a former police officer myself, I can say that I have been in that position, and I stand with the PBA, and I stand to say that we need more staffing here in the Suffolk Police Department, in the Suffolk Village of Suffolk, to keep all of our residents safe, and to keep the police officers safe on patrol. So let's really reflect on it and have some discussion. Thank you, President Samora. Okay. Moving on. I don't know if Mr. Magrino is here yet, did Mr. Magrino check in yet? Okay, well, I'll skip down to, to the mayor, if you don't mind. Let's see. So I have the resolution to reappoint Robert Yodowitz as village prosecutor for the Village of Suffolk on a contract basis effective August 1st through July 31st, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second? Trustee Corrigan, was that it?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any reason that, that we have that not on, on a fiscal year basis, and it's sort of a random time period throughout the budget year?
We should try to roll it into the, the fiscal year. There is no reason, it was a contract, that would be the only reason why, but it is a good idea to try to, maybe we should roll it into the next fiscal year.
So what that would mean, though, is that the, the, the end date, instead of being August 1st through July 31st, maybe the end date should tentatively be May 31st, not, not planning to do anything after that to change that if he wants to continue, but that way it would line up with the, with the fiscal year, the next time we negotiate, you know, work on the budget.
Okay, so do you want, you want to, you want to make that change now, or do you want to make that change?
Loosening the board, if, if the board is interested in making this line up with, with our fiscal year financially.
Okay with it.
Sure.
Sure, that's a great idea. Mike, Mr. Janito, do you see any issue on the change, like, should we make the change date to, should it be May 31, or should it be April 30th?
Oh, May 31 is fine.
May 31 would be fine. Great idea, Mr. Albert.
Thank you. It, it just seems to make sense if it lines up with our fiscal year. That way it's definitely budgeted properly.
Okay, so reappointing Robert Yodowitz as village prosecutor for the Village of Suffolk on a contract basis effective August 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is accepting the resignation of Paul Gedansky as Planning Board Member effective July 7th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Barone, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Is, is there any plan to replace that position, or will the, will, the, there's like a member who's, who's pending, what do you call that?
We have an ad hoc member, but I would like to, with, you know, with the board, we may want to appoint another person, either from the ad hoc to move them up and then replace the ad hoc, something along those lines, but I need to discuss it with the chair.
Yeah.
Okay.
When was Mr. Gedansky's term up? When was it scheduled to be up?
I don't have it, I don't have that information on me.
I think it was next year.
Was it next year?
I think so.
Okay, so we could fill the unexpired term, you know, whichever way we choose to, This year's reorg meeting, so the first Monday in, in December of 20. That's the updated one? Okay. Okay, um, one last thing for me, and then I'm just going to wait to, for Mr. Magrino to come in. So by a letter, I just want to make this quick statement, by a le, a letter dated May 27th, 2020, a village resident received a letter from the Village of Suffolk, signed by a member of the Village Board of Trustees, that confirmed that records she requested from trustee Paul Gerard did not exist, do not exist. The FOIL request began on February 3rd, 2020, requesting the R, requesting the RFP and any and all documents of trustee Paul Gerard pertaining to the December 2nd, 2019 meeting, and ultimately concluded on May 27th, 2020, with two letters issued, one from a member of the village board to address a FOIL denial request, and one from the village clerk as the records access officer, advising the resident that the village does not possess the RFP, trustee Gerard clearly stated he had developed. Since the issuance of the May 27th, 2020 letters, I have put myself in the resident's place to determine how I would react if I had received a letter from the Village of Suffolk confirming that the document trustee Gerard spoke of when he explained to the public that he knows how to write an RFP, created, created an RFP for the purposes of soliciting an attorney, and use this document as a basis of discussion to interview attorneys, and it somehow does not exist. I would be very, very concerned, because as a resident of this village, it is my expectation that each and every elected and appointed official should do everything in their power to uphold the Constitution of the State of New York and the Constitution of the United States of America. Uphold the Constitution includes making statements that are truthful, because if truthfulness is ever, ever questioned, every elected and appointed official should be responsible to back up their words with either the document or the actions that would support their statements. Neither of these two things occurred related to this residence records request. Though the village clerk conducted an exhaustive search to find the RFP the trustee spoke about creating and using, this document does not exist. Therefore, no record exists, which is what the FOIL process determined. Even though the final answer to our concerned resident, the FOIL request journey was no record exists. Is that the end of the story? From a FOIL standpoint, the answer is yes, but from the standpoint of any resident who is dedicating to raising matters to the board's attention that are of concern, the May 27th, 2020 letter received has called into question the truthfulness of each and every board member, including myself. Though I can confirm that no RFP record exists, trustee Gerard has not had the, has not explained why he said one thing and only to change his statement to say he actually didn't do what he said he did. The responsibility to explain this difference lies with every board member if this concern ever arises, and in this case, it's trustee Gerard's responsibility to provide the answer to this question and to the resident. If the resident desires to speak to him directly, to finally receive a satisfactory answer to a currently open question, I believe this should occur. The answer to the question about the existence of an RFP can be satisfied in only two ways. Trustee Gerard produces a document that the village is not currently in possession of, or trustee Gerard provides an explanation as to the discrepancy in his statement, which may or may not be to the satisfaction of the resident. I ask trustee Gerard, who unfortunately, not, not to at this important meeting, to step up and do what is the right thing, answer the question that have been raised since December 2nd, 2019, as to how you solicited a response from attorneys that you used to select and move forward with the unlawful appointment of an attorney on December 2nd. These are concerns that have been going on since December. These questions have been unanswered. The residents of in concern are calling and demanding an answer. I feel it is trustee Gerard's responsibility to answer and put this all behind us. I am in possession or have no knowledge of any record here in the village as it pertains to his statements, and that is my statement. Thank you. Okay.
Mayor, were you reading a letter from a resident, or were you making a personal statement?
That is my, that is my statement. That is the concerns that were addressed and brought to my attention, and it needs to be remedied to the resident. I hope we can do that. Okay, did Mr. Magrino check in yet?
Mayor, I don't see that he has.
Okay. Okay, he's signing on now and will be with us in 30 seconds. And he will be reviewing the accepting payment from Stone Castle, extending the expiration date of the ZBA, and the informal discussion of special permit requests. What am I missing here?
Okay, Mr. Magrino has joined us.
Oh, hi, I'm on, good, sorry about that, sorry for the delay. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, where are we?
We are at the Attorney Section 9, and the resolution's accepting payment from Stone Castle. So if you could speak to that.
Right, so that was a Planning Board approval for the property at 175, 174 to 176 Lafayette Avenue, crossing the hospital, that's a project that was approved by the Planning Board. One of the requirements was that they provide a community benefit, and they are doing so in the way of a donation of park, of outside park benches and receptacles placed around the village. In discussing, discussion with Charles Sawicki, since the Department of Works will be putting those out, they've given us the, basically the cash for that, so we're accepting the money, and then Charles will purchase the, the equipment and place it throughout the village.
Great, so I have the resolution here, accepting payment from Stone Castle Suffolk LLC, representing payment for the community benefit condition for site plan number 16B slash 37 dash 4B. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, on the discussion? So this was something that was negotiated, geez, it has to be a couple of years ago now, for the community benefit. Also along with that was a covenant that was negotiated also, Mr. Magrino, for the first responders and military members, if they so choose to rent in that development.
Right, that's a condition of the approval, is that they be offered a discount.
Right.
And they are submitting that paperwork to us, so that will, actually, will probably be on the next meeting for formal acceptance.
Great, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next resolution, accepting, no, extending the expiration date of the ZBA and the P, Planning Board building permits.
Right, so the governor, I shouldn't say the governor, actually the entire state legislature and the governor passed into law, the authorization for local municipalities to extend the expiration date on zoning board of appeals approvals, planning board approvals, and building permits that were active before March 7th, 2020, for a period of up to 120 days. And if the board is interested in doing that, it can adopt a resolution pursuant to that law, which has been proposed, and it, it applies, you know, interestingly, it doesn't apply to any that come after March 7th, but I, the feeling probably is something such as a building permit, it goes for a year, so if you got a building permit named September, and then, you know, March came around and, and nothing could be done for basically eight weeks, you know, now things are getting ramped up, so the extra 120 days to people building an, an open building permit, same as ZBA, a planning board approvals, frankly, if you didn't pass this, most applicants would probably go to the ZBA and planning board to ask for an extension, and under circumstances, it's likely they would grant it, so in essence, this is kind of helping, you know, save that, that step. It's up to 120 days, so you can do anything, you know, less than that, but up to 120, and I spoke with the building inspector, Steve Conley, he's, he's in favor of 120 days, it would help there.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing the extension of the expiration for any building permits, zoning board approvals, and planning board approvals for a period of 120 days. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Welcome.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can I speak again real quick while we get a moment, you guys are done?
Oh, sure, yes, you can.
Are you guys, are you guys done, whatever you've done? I just want to let you know I'm here, so.
Go ahead, while you're on, go ahead, because I'm just, I'm gonna follow up with Mr. Magrino on the last issue. Go ahead.
All right, thank you so much. I just, I feel I need to speak with Officer Smear as well. I think the reality of our department, our job is, we've been under tremendous pressure, our department, every police officer. We're through COVID, exposed, had guys sick, work minimum staff because we haven't hired cops where we should be. Now under, law enforcement is under attack nationwide. All these, there's activists, there's people coming after us constantly. Our 50A regulations of discipline records overturned. All the different things that are happening to police officers around, the negative connotations towards us are very serious. And the risk for violence for officers, and for every officer actor, has increased. And to Officer Smear's point, we are extremely short. It is not easy to get part-time officers in Rockland County. I've spoken to him, I know you're aware, it's been spoken many times, but it, Rockland County restrictions are very strict on part-timers, unlike Orange or other counties. They, we are bound by the Rockland County Police Act, but you're also bound by a lawsuit that was filed by the Ramapo, EBA in the year 2000, which limits how we get part-time. So we can't just crowd higher part-timers because it's very, it's very restricted. So I think to Officer Smear's point, we need cops. I've been saying this for a long time. If they go up here and the officers feel like we're under attack, but I'm the only one who has to get up there and mention detailed overtime reports in the village. And we're short-staffed, we're telling you we're short-staffed, and your officers are unsafe. To the point where residents tonight were so upset after what they heard, people questioning about our overtime, they're gonna start coming to meetings and start calling. They were that upset that many of them. But there was no reason for them to bother, they called them, they worked until we talked to you. I think to Officer Smear is stating, it's fact 100%, and you know my feelings. I've emailed you, I've spoken to you. I stressed we need more police officers for the safety of this village. We're not a little village, we're a big village. There's a lot of activity, there's a lot of community events, we have a train station, downtown, a bus station, hospital, a lot of other stuff here besides residents. I'm asking you, I'm calling your police to tell us over the manpower, our officers deserve to be safe, and the residents deserve to have us safe. They're questioning overtime, every single moment, every meeting has gotten out of control. I live here too. I've been here my whole life, been working there 30 years. I've never in my life, with something like this, with this board questioning the integrity of my officers, taking the overtime and abusing it. Overtime is there because we're short cops, and it's simple. I wasn't gonna get like this, but I'm really to the point where we need to step up and take care of this police department, this community. Thank you, and I'm always here for your phone calls. And you know, when there's 24 hours a day, that's most of our offices are.
I would like the opportunity to say something, please, all right, Ed?
Well, go ahead.
I am a little bit horrified to think that our police department feels as though people on the village board, and I'm gonna speak for myself, would ever think that they are not top-notch. Number one, absolutely the best department I feel in the area. I mean, I live here, and probably shouldn't say this out loud. I don't lock my doors because I know our police department is so good, and Clark yells at me for that all the time.
Yes, I do.
So, but I can't, you know, I have full faith in our police department, and, and I am truly, truly horrified and very taken back that, you know, that, I just, I don't want it to reflection on the board that we don't care, because I will personally speak for myself that I personally love this police department, and it's one of the reasons why I live here, and it's one of the reasons why I want to be in office, and it's one of the main reasons why everybody's jealous of Suffering. So that's what I have to say, in that I do believe that anything that we can do to help you protect and preserve and keep everyone safe and healthy, I absolutely agree.
No, and I appreciate it, Joe.
And I am very sorry that, you know, that our police department feels as though the board does not appreciate them.
Joe, I think, Joe, thank you, and I know you support us, you always have, and you're on the board in the past also. We seem to get beat up every meeting over the same things, and I give the board the same answers. Nothing's changed. I'm short cops, I'm short cops, I got cops injured, I got cops sick. I got guys with COVID, serious, serious illnesses of my cops. And I still got beat up over it. And I kept my cool. I live here, and my family's been here for almost 200 years in this area, and around Ramapo. And I've never been on, I've never been attacked by a board over things that I told them I cannot control because of a manpower situation. And if you step up more like this, then I'm gonna have no choice. I will make sure that the residents that have called me will come out as well. If I'm doing something wrong, I'll be the first one to correct it. I'm not doing my job, I'll be the first one to correct it. Overtime is because we're short cops. Only reason, my cops deserve the protection, and they deserve every bit of protection we can get. Thank you again.
Chief, thank you, and I just really want to make mention to the board again that the controls that are in place within the Suffering Police Department to monitor and control overtime are fully supervised by the sergeants and the lieutenants of that shift. Every, every officer that makes an arrest, that needs to perform overtime due to the arrest, due to being out sick, whatever it may be, is regulated right downstairs, right in our police department. These are, these are the concerns that we have. They are a 24/7 operation, they are short-staffed. They considered our, our fiscal restraints and how we were moving through this village financially. I think now is the time to consider. You know, we're gonna, we have all the officers, some may be retiring. We need to start the process of the canvassing. I know that we have a canvas process in place downstairs, and, and anyone that's eligible should be vetted and canvassed, and make sure, and not just a one-for-one replacement, not one guy retires, we fill one more slot. The, the shortage is roughly, I think it was 29 to 22. 29 full-time officers years ago, and now we're at 22. So let's really start to consider these, these concerns.
And there, and board, we have at least three retirements this year. One will be done in August, probably one in January, and one in next June. So we're gonna be, that's minimum three, but then the next budget, which reality is you're gonna save some money there alone. You're gonna save a lot of money with retirements, a lot. There's a longevity's, pension chip, pension costs are cheaper. This would be the time for going to expand that to do it.
Chief, should we start the canvas process now?
For the new position now, I would say yes, we have to. I would say to start it, to have people in place. There is a new test being given in September. The new list will probably be, be hiring more off the new list. The only list, this particular position I need to fill, because when this officer leaves in August, we're gonna be filling all the type shifts on an unbelievable basis due to the fact that it's vacation season down in the summertime.
Okay, so let's start that canvas process.
Okay, I appreciate, thank you, I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I want to respond to your comments. You seem to be very agitated that the board would ask you to just simply report how many hours of overtime or how much dollars, I should say really, of overtime was spent in a given month. I don't think that's an unreasonable request. We would like to monitor that amount, and we believe that the public should be aware of the costs in policing. This is not an attack on the police. It is not a question of your integrity or the integrity of any of the officers. And I actually feel offended that any police officers take this as an attack on their integrity, because it's not. It is just doing my due diligence as a trustee to keep track of the dollars that the village spends. I have residents calling me and emailing me constantly saying, we are spending too much money on various things. And I'll tell you what, the police is 55% of the budget, so of course it gets more questioned by the public. So it is not an attack on the police, it's just transparency to say, this is what it costs, and this is why. And I think that it's a fair request, and please do not take it as an attack. Thank you.
Look, Steve, and I understand, but we're 55% of the budget because we work 420% more than any other department in the village. 21 shifts a week compared to five. And also, Stephen, regards to the overtime, we feel like we're the only department that's asking for a detailed report. I don't see anybody else giving detailed reports. That's my, an odyssey, Steve, that's the concern, I think, why we feel like, and the PBD came and did this, and said, what is going on? Why do they continually go after us when it's going short? And Steve, we understand this expense, and we get it. We're trying to keep costs down to within. But the more officers you hire, the less the cost will go down. But when you feel underperformance, it's single that to everybody else. Yes, that's the way they're going to feel, and the PBD does feel that way.
The police department overtime is more than all the overtime in the village combined.
Correct, 24/7, 365, Steve.
It's more than three times whatever. In other words, my point is it's out of line, and therefore we just need to keep an eye on it, make sure it does not go over budget.
Steve, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address you, and it's not out of line. Stony Point Police Department has the same amount of officers we have, 500,000 dollar budget to share overtime. We're not out of line, Steve. I can get the numbers from everybody, we're not out of line. And the bottom line is, my officers do a great job, and we'll give you whatever the board requires. This conversation had to be had, had to be had tonight. Because we are not spending it wildly throwing it around. We're spending it when officers are injured, sick, or out, for public safety.
All I'm asking is that you reveal that information to the public once a month. I don't think it's a lot to ask for.
No, I understand that. Is any other department doing that, or just police department?
At this time, just the police department.
And why is that, Steve?
As I stated, it is the biggest source of expense in the village.
And I'm gonna say one more statement before I get off. We're 420% more per week. That's my last statement, I will stop, thank you very much.
Public safety here in the village is a major concern. The abuse, there is no, there is no abuse of overtime. You guys shouldn't, Steve, or whoever, we should all recognize that point, that overtime is a necessary part of policing. It's also an unknown part of policing. We don't know, or the officer on patrol doesn't know if he's gonna encounter an arrest, or an injury, or an illness. These are the unforeseen circumstances that police officers recognize or encounter every day. There is, every police department's budget, overtime budget is larger than a DPW budget or a street department budget. They were, they were unforeseen. They are a 24/7 day operation, 24, 24-hour, 7-day operation, 365 days a year. Holidays, Christmases, birthdays, other holidays, that our guys are out there working. And to criticize them, I understand that we need to stay within our budgetary restraints. But it is appalling to recognize or call out the police department individually, and not only by calling out what the overtime is. You want it broken down by patrol strength, you may be putting others at risk. If you create these documents that indicate how many officers are on patrol, how many are on vacation, what do you think that is? That, that turns into a possible vulnerability to the police officer and an opportunity for criminal activity. Those are certain types of, that is information that shouldn't, I don't want to say shouldn't be disclosed, but to the mere fact of drilling down into the number of people that are on overtime or encountered overtime, that are on holiday, you're, you're making the police officer vulnerable at the same time. If you track, if you track the overtime, you'd be able to track and see how many officers are working.
I respectfully disagree with you, Mayor. I think this is just transparency, and the public needs to know.
Transparency is fine. Okay. Back to... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Magrino? The informal discussion for the special permit request from 475 Beacon Partners.
Right, so I see Jay Greenwell is on while I'm speaking, Mike, maybe if you could unmute Jay. This, I'll let them give the narrative of what they want to do, but it's a, they're, they want to, they're going to, if they get what they want to do, there's gonna be a special permit from this board, the village board. They've already been before the planning board for kind of an informal discussion. They're here to get the process moving, let you know what they intend on doing, and maybe get a feel from the board as to whether or not, you know, that's something the board would entertain. I believe Jay's in the process of, I guess, making a formal application, but there's gonna be no vote tonight, this is just for a presentation. So Jay, it looks like you're ready to roll, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Would you like me to pull up a copy of the site plan, Mr. Mayor?
If you could, does, does Michael have it, or can you share it?
I can share it.
Okay, yeah, sure, that will be fine.
I think you have to let me do that.
Yeah, I think, Michael, would he be able to do that?
Yeah, one second.
Okay, Jay, do you have the ability to share at this point?
Yeah, I think I do, yeah. Bear with me. You see that site plan there?
I'm starting to share, we don't see anything yet. There you go, you got it now.
Okay. Thank you, thanks, Rob. This application involves 62 Lafayette Avenue, the former HSBC Bank, which has been vacant for quite a while. And the application is to develop the existing property, pretty much keeping the footprint of the building the way it is now. But the footprint would only be changed in the front, in this area that I'm circling here. This would be a covered area. These are the current downstairs to the basement entrance. The idea is to convert this building into a restaurant, slash bar, slash cigar store, and private cigar club. And the cigar club is what generates the need for a special permit. The, the building, we, the architect has prepared plans showing how this would be divvied up and how this would function in accordance with the Rockland County Health Department. There would be no smoking areas for the public areas, but the club itself would be an area where patrons could enjoy a cigar. The basement would be used for heating up pre-made or frozen sort of bar food, and the main level would be sectioned off, as I mentioned. There's an existing wide concrete plaza, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with. These landscaped islands would remain, they'll be renovated. They're, you know, sort of falling apart right now. But they would be renovated, and they would be hopefully used for seasonal outdoor seating. The idea is to have maybe a fire pit. People would be able to sit on the edges of these planters, which are raised, and enjoy a drink or an outdoor smoke. The area would be proposed to be, the perimeter would be a fence that would cordon off this area, leave this concrete area available for the public access to the building. These planters, which are here, would also be renovated, and they would be remaining seating area, waiting for table, or whatever, what have you inside. The existing drive-through entrance would be a, the teller area would be removed. There would be a handicapped space over here, and this would be an outdoor gaming area, sort of like a bocce court, most likely. And the canopy that covers the drive-in window or area would be, would remain the cover, so that it would be protected from the elements. The macadam that's here would be removed, and there'd be a paver entranceway for pedestrians and so on. The plan right now is to provide three parking spaces adjacent to the building, sort of opposite where Rich Ellsworth parks his car on the adjoining property. The alleyway would, would stay open, and the access to this alleyway is through the parking lot B. While the former bank had no outdoor parking, what we're creating for, but we have a shortfall, and either waiver or variance would be necessary to... but we have a shortfall, and either waiver or variance would be necessary to, uh, allow this project to continue. We feel there's an abundance of, uh, street parking and municipal parking, uh, available in parking lot B, which, you know, I, I see that almost on a daily basis, and there seems to be quite a capacity. I see it also in the evenings, and, uh, this use would be, uh, most intense, um, in the after-hours, happy hours, and so on, um, which would not necessarily conflict with the commuter parking and the employee employer, uh, shopping, parking mostly during the day. The planning board had some questions, uh, on the parking issue, and they were looking into the use and the capacity in parking lot B. But basically, we, we feel that, uh, this would be a, a big boon to the area, this, uh, this particular corner of the building of the, uh, of the village is a very high profile. We think this would be a really nice addition, and it would be a very attractive addition. The fence that I mentioned would be very similar to the, uh, black, uh, sort of almost wrought iron-looking fence that exists right to the north on the parking lot, on the municipal parking lot, also very similar to the, uh, the little fence that surrounds the Village Park on Chestnut, due south of here. So it would be, uh, it would be similar to other fencing, as a matter of fact, similar to what's just west of Java Love now, uh, in that old parking lot there, which was the Capital One Bank. So, so that's basically...
A four-foot fence, roughly?
Yes, correct. Four foot high.
Right, okay.
So, and it will be see-through, so you would be able to see the vegetation and the people enjoying themselves and so on, and this will be a, a good complement to, you know, movie theater when everything back gets back open, but, but the movie theaters and coffee place across the street, I, I think would be a welcome addition. But anyway, uh, as Rob mentioned, we're gonna need a special permit from the village board, and we're gonna need to, uh, go back to the planning board, uh, for a site plan approval, and get their, uh, uh, feeling on the parking issue, and, and get this all resolved. But we thought an informal discussion with you guys to, uh, see where this could go would be very beneficial. Thank you.
Jay, the, uh, the special permit is for the, um, private membership club aspect, right?
That's correct.
Maybe, I, I, I'm not sure if the board caught that. Can you just describe what that is again?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Vic and Anthony Scipione, or the principals, I'm gonna ask one of them to speak to that issue, if that would be all right?
Yeah, one moment, I'll, uh, connect them.
So, how long has this been with the village?
At the planning board?
Or is this the first time you're...
No, 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 they, they appeared before the planning board. I don't know when. When was that?
Last month, uh, June.
June.
We had made an application back in, uh, I guess it was early March, and obviously, everything came to a screeching halt.
Okay, so this is the first time we're all seeing all this?
Well, the planning board saw it back a little in June, but this is the first time the village board has seen it, yes. We, we are getting ready, the application for the special permit, but it was Rob's suggestion that we come on informally, since there was an opportunity to do so.
Perfect.
Took advantage.
Okay, so we'll have time for more questions after we think about it, right?
Oh, yeah, there'll be, have to be a full application for the, for the special permit that's gonna have to be presented.
Right, there's no vote tonight. That's why I suggested they come on, so that you could...
Okay.
Hear it, you know, so you weren't hearing it and then having to vote the same meeting.
I, I had a question. You, you mentioned that the handicap parking was in the rear, but it would be accessed from lot B. My recollection, and I could be wrong, but my recollection is that there is a retaining wall of some sort between lot B and the rear parking area that's like, uh, in other words, it's raised certainly above the level, the ground level in parking lot B. It's not a direct connection.
There is a travel way that is accessible by vehicle, comes in through here, through parking lot B. There is a retaining wall, but there's a break in the retaining wall that permits vehicular traffic to come through the municipal parking lot, and then it would, this would be the route to the handicap space. This is all macadam and through, this is all one C of macadam, and then this handicap space would have an eight-foot aisle here that would be accessible to, uh, the rear door here.
Okay.
Are either Vic or Anthony available?
Anthony and Vic, you're both unmuted, so you can speak.
Okay, so Victor or Anthony, could you just address the, the way in which the cigar bar is, or the cigar, uh, club is gonna work, and where that would be in the building?
Yes, good evening. So, in the, um, the back of the building, the entrance would, would be, um, right with, um, the back parking lot, uh, right where Jay's showing up, right through there. Um, so it's a, a cigar club, um, with cigar lockers, where, um, members would keep their cigars in there and, uh, be able to enjoy a cigar occasionally, and, um, unwind and, um, you know, enjoy the atmosphere that we give them. Um, we have two other places, um, one in New York and one in Danbury, Connecticut, where we, we feel like, uh, we've been a big part of the community there, and, uh, we're looking forward to, um, you know, being a big part of the suffering community as well.
Approximately, how many square feet would you, uh, estimate that would be the cigar club?
Uh, the cigar club, off the top of my head, I am not sure exactly. I would say, uh, roughly, the whole thing's about thirty, I would say...
East of the portion of the building here?
Yeah, I would say maybe like two thousand square feet.
Okay. And could you just briefly speak to the ventilation issue that you were talking about before with the, at the planning board?
Sure, so the ventilation system is, is, is very important, um, to us. It's, it's a huge expense, uh, for our build-out, um, you know, not only to, uh, a, a environment, um, for people to be able to have a cigar and be comfortable, um, but, you know, also with, uh, regulations, um, there's, there's ones with the county that, um, you know, we, we're in the process with, um, you know, in the past, doing these, uh, these procedures anyway, um, based on, you know, having the proper airflow, uh, in the lounge. Um, so that is a huge part of our, our build-out, um, with an engineer and, uh, and the requirements that are asked, um, and then even going beyond that with, um, um, the filtration, uh, also.
And is there any smoking in the restaurant and bar and store area?
No, so that, that is, um, off limits. It's just in the cigar lounge. Um, the bar is gonna be a separate bar, just like any other bar, um, with, uh, with no smoking, and there'll be, um, um, you know, a separated area, um, where, uh, you would have to travel through, um, to get to the bar. So even in that separate area, there's no smoking either, um, and that's gonna be where there's gonna be the lounge, um, bathrooms and locker room. Um, so they are, there's no smoking in that area either.
Smoking will be allowed outside in the fenced-in area, though, correct?
So fenced in in the, um, area where the underpass is, uh, in front of the bar, uh, again, we're, we're gonna treat it like a bar, um, you know, with, with the rules that the town has with, you know, smoking outdoors. Um, so we do have separate areas that we can have smoking and, and keep the bar smoke-free, um, so that smokers and non-smokers can enjoy the entire, um, um, businesses that we're bringing.
But I, I thought, eh, I thought that the smoking law was, if you're smoking and walking, that was allowed, but you're not allowed to sit at a, at a, I guess, a, a business and actually sit down and smoke. Is that, I guess I, Rob or somebody can...
I don't know.
Uh, update us on the, uh, law for standing there smoking at a bar outside?
We'd have to look into that, too, too.
Yeah, honestly, I really don't know. I, I would ask Victor or Anthony if they have any insight into that. I'll certainly look after this meeting, really unsure.
Okay, yeah, I know we're not voting, but just some questions.
I'm a cigar smoker, and there are places where I can go and have a drink and sit at a table and smoke a cigar. So it doesn't, it does, outside. It doesn't seem to be, uh, I didn't realize that there was a law against smoking outside.
If you're at an establishment, yes.
Some campuses, like Good Sam, regulates and says there's no smoking on the entire campus, but I don't know about restaurants, we'll have to check into that.
Okay.
Also, just to clarify, I think you had mentioned the cigar, uh, situation, that's a, that would be like a private club of some sort, whereas the restaurant and bar, that would be open to the public, is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, I think it's a, you know, it's another great asset, if we can, if this could come through, um, it's another great asset for the village of suffering, even, you know, for the recovery after COVID, you know? We, we do have some great restaurants downtown, and this would just be another addition, and it'll be a, a destination for people to come in and visit the village of suffering. Um, I think it's a great idea, if we could work through the special permitting, um, for the private club. Um, look at the parking requirements. I know, um, commuting and driving is drastically gonna change now, here in, in New York, across the country, um, and the timing of the use is always considered when we're running a business, as opposed to, um, uh, commuting times and offsetting the parking requirements for commuters and shoppers. Your, your business model will most likely be more towards the evening and night, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Correct, and a lot of Uber drive, Uber drop-offs and pickups as well, if we, that's what we found with our other places.
Right, okay.
Jay, just, uh, if I could, what, what are the requirements of the zoning for the parking, and just so that the board's aware?
This is in the CB district, and as with most of the restaurants, you know, you can't possibly comply with the, the parking requirements. The, um, the requirements on this project are, um, twenty-seven spaces required for the restaurant, uh, thirty, thirty all told, um, thirty all told, and we're providing four. But again, you know, there isn't, I, I would defy, uh, any restaurant in, uh, in the village to, to, to come into compliance with the requirements for parking.
True.
The challenging part here in the village, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Is, is the restaurant, like, uh, is, is it known yet what style of restaurant is planned as far as type of food?
Currently, we're going through that, but it's definitely gonna be, um, more like street food, um, depending on, on what type of street food we're gonna go with, but more, um, it's gonna be more about the cocktails, and, and the food is gonna be quality, street food, uh, but be able for you to have a cocktail and a finger food, uh, type of approach.
It won't be competing with Marcello?
No.
Will this be similar to your two other locations?
No, so the, uh, the restaurant part is, is something new for us. The other locations are just the cigar shop and lounge. Um, we did grow up in the restaurant business, so this is something that we've always wanted to incorporate with cigars, they go so well together. Um, so, yeah, we're looking forward for this new adventure and, uh...
But it's gonna be a very limited menu. It's not gonna be...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, just one more quick question. Um, so can you just walk through one door to the other, from the club to the restaurant, from the club to the restaurant?
So from the, uh, from the club to the, the, the bar restaurant, there is a, um, there's two doors you would have to go through. So the first door would be the, uh, non-smoking area, which will have bathrooms, and also the locker room, which is the storage, uh, for the, the cigars for the members.
Uh-huh.
There is no smoking, um, through that door, and then from that area, there is another door leading into the bar.
It's like a buffer, like a corridor, a buffer.
Yeah, I get it.
An airlock.
And anyhow, you can take, hold your breath and run.
Well, it is actually, uh, very important with the air pressure, um, with the exhaust system and, and the whole airflow thing, so we do have to regulate that and make sure that the pressure is correct in the cigar lounge to have the proper...
So, do you have that in your other facilities?
Yes.
Are your other businesses, it would be the same?
Um, you know, as technology improves, it gets better from doing this for twenty years. I, I've seen, uh, amazing, uh, improvements in technology. So I would say, our New York place was built in twenty seventeen, uh, the technology's a lot better than, uh, our Danbury place, where, you know, we're looking to improve on that every so often, um, you know, besides the huge expense of, of, of tremendous filters that we have to go through, uh, you know, on an annual, not an annual, on a quarterly change, um, but also, uh, you know, having this, this system that, uh, with technology, it's, it's usually, you, maybe half, uh, to a quarter of our cost of, of complete build-outs.
Oh, okay. High expense.
Yeah.
And patrons that are members of the club purchase a drink in the bar, and then take that downstairs to the cigar bar?
Uh, so it is the same, it's the same level, um, so there's no stairs, but they, they physically have to come in and get the drink and bring it into the lounge. We cannot offer waitresses, or leaders, or, or anyone to be able to do that.
And they must leave their cigar in the lounge before entering any other, uh, non-smoking area. So if they wanna get a drink, it'll be their cigar in the, in the private lounge, get their drink, and then go back into their private lounge, or go outside.
Understood, thank you.
Would you be able to email us the Danbury and the New York City location?
Uh, sure, uh, email you the, uh, the address?
Uh, yeah, or whatever's easiest, yeah. It'd be fun to check out.
Sure. The one in New York is in Elmsford.
Oh, it's even closer.
Yeah, it's right over the bridge.
And they have the same business model exactly, the restaurant, bar, and private club?
No, no, sir, the, uh, the bar, um, and restaurant part is, is new to us. They, they have this, the cigar shop and the private lounge.
Okay, so just this, the shop and the lounge, in Elmsford?
And in Danbury, Connecticut.
Okay, so this is the new model, gotcha, okay. All right, so where do we go from here, Mr. Magrino?
I was laughing at people do that, sorry, I was on mute. Um, Jay, uh, is putting together his, uh, the special permit, he's gonna make a formal application, presumably we'll have it in time for, uh, next meeting, workshop and, uh, the village board meeting.
Okay, all right, I think the presentation was, uh, was excellent, thank you. Um, are there any other, any questions or concerns?
Well, I, I, if we have questions or concerns, how do we, uh, how do we ask them and get them answered?
We get them through Mr. Magrino, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, if you wanna shoot me an email and, and Jay as well, or, you know, we can work that out, but...
All right, perfect.
Frankly, you know, we could have him, uh, come on the workshop as well. Um, so he'll be on a workshop, and then he'll have another chance to ask questions, and if they need to make any changes or anything, it could be on the, the board meeting.
Yeah, let's plan on that, let's plan on bringing them back before the workshop, that'll be a great idea.
Yep, just wanna make sure I can get some homework done. Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. I plan on getting that special permit application, and hopefully by the end of this week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, goodnight.
Goodnight, thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, I'd like to make a motion to go into an executive session.
Um, we skipped the trustee section, number eight.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Trustees.
Um, I don't know about the other trustees. I, I had one thing I was gonna bring up. It was actually an email I received. Uh, I'll read the email, 'cause it's very short, uh, from, uh, from Ms. Klein on Hillside. She, uh, had an, an opinion about the budgeting and then a que- a question. So I'll read you both this, both of these things. She says, "I ask that the village place a spending freeze on any purchases or hiring until we can assess the damage that COVID will have on the budget." So it's a sensible thing, although we did, uh, approve some, uh, lease car and the, uh, and the cameras today. Uh, next question, uh, is what is happening with Twenty Seven Hillside? So I don't know if anyone's prepared to speak on that. That is something that's sort of been a pet project of mine. I guess that's why she addressed this to me, and, uh, I'm hoping we can get an update on Twenty Seven Hillside.
Yeah, I can provide that if you want.
Yes, please.
Um, to the extent we can discuss it, because, uh, depending on what happens, in the past, as you know, the village has, uh, uh, under appropriate circumstances, um, undertaken to give notice, uh, to clear the area, and if the area was not cleaned up, um, uh, the village would clean it up and charge it to the tax bill. So, um, you know, to the extent we may be at that point, uh, that might, that's something that, uh, to be discussed with the code enforcement, um, for them to give the appropriate notice, again, if, um, if warranted, and then, uh, if it's not cleared up, after the appropriate notice is given, present something to the village board to take action, again, if appropriate.
Thank you.
Now, my understanding is that the, the person who owns Twenty Seven Hillside is not living there, unless he is, but I believe the property was shut down by the Board of Health. Uh, how would you propose to contact him if he's not living there? How do we know where to reach him?
Right. Well, I don't wanna get into many details. We, you know, we'll take care of the legality of that, but, um, yeah, he's, the, the Department of Health has, um, you know, prevent, basically prevented the owner from going in, but, uh, you know, we post appropriate notices and, and, you know, when, i- if and when it gets to the point for the board to take action, you know, we'll, we'll let, we'll address that in terms of how he, how the property owner was put on notice and, um, you know, efforts that were taken in that regard.
How did you-
Those are, those certainly are required in order to obviously have him clean up and, uh, you know, to take, for the village board to take actions.
Now, in, in addition to any of the issues with the cleanup, uh, I do recall that approximately a year and a half ago, it was quite a while ago, the, this, uh, part of this village board and part of the previous village board, uh, uh, passed a resolution, uh, rega- uh, regarding, uh, dumpsters and whatnot, and I believe there are dumpsters on the property that would in fact be in violation of that. So is there any teeth or whatever, any fines that can be assessed in addition to any action that we take, because this resident has been, uh, flagrantly violating village code at this point?
Uh, right. Well, again, it, since it would ultimately be a court matter, what the thing I feel comfortable saying is if the village code enforcement officer determines that there's a violation for something such as, uh, either, you know, property maintenance or, you know, that there's, uh, you know, like a better term, junk on the property, and, uh, you know, the, uh, dumpster issue, yeah, then it would be appropriate for them to, to take appropriate, to take action, so.
Has, has the resident-
I'll leave it at that.
Has the resident ever been cited for the dumpster?
I don't believe so, no.
So I'm, uh, sort of suggesting, as a board member here, I'm suggesting that the code enforcer, uh, perhaps investigate this, and if there's a dumpster in fact that's been present beyond the period, uh, that you're allowed, which is a very short period without a permit, I, I feel that the code enforcement should issue a, uh, a letter to that effect.
Steve, do you want me to send you Randy's, um, number so that you can call him and, and fill him in on the details that you know, so that way you can call him and get that started? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Uh, I may have it, but if you wanna forward it to me just in case, that would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, that, that's, we should be talking to Randy about that stuff.
I understand. I just wanted to bring it up for the benefit of the public, because I had a resident email me directly about this. Uh, so it, it's, it's an issue that's festered for quite some time. I mean, I've, I've been on the board, you know, for the entire time I've been on the board, this has been an issue.
Right, and, and, you know, if I'm sounding a little evasive, it's not intentional. I just, it's, it's a, you know, it's the function of the code enforcement officer to do that. You certainly, you know, can express your opinion, but, uh, I think it, you know, has to go through the proper channels, and eventually, if appropriate, it will be before this board.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, okay. So I can make a motion to go into an executive session to discuss personnel matters. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, we will, um, reconvene into the regular meeting. So if you would like to stand by while we adjourn, um, and enter into an executive session, um, we will be back. Everyone has the calling number, is that correct?
Yes, I'm gonna mute.
Yes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna need two seconds, though.
And Mr. Mayor, maybe, uh, I don't think there's an intention to take a vote after, correct?
Uh, yes, there is.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is, okay.
There is.
There is an intention to take, um, but that's, that will be determined in the executive session-
Okay.
And by the board. Um, but I believe, I believe there will be one, one action taken.
Okay.
And Mr. Magrino, um, I'm just thinking, if you could be on standby, do you wanna join us in the executive session?
Sure, yeah.
Yes, please join us in the executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be there in two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion to enter regular session?
Motion.
Trustee Barone, second?
Trustee.
Trustee Corrigan, thank you. Okay, so we are going to take action on, uh, two resolutions. The first resolution is appointing Robert Magrino to village attorney to fill vacancy, whereas pursuant to New York Village Law four dash four hundred, one C, the mayor has determined it would be in the best interest of the village to appoint Robert V. Magrino Esquire, a resident of Rockland County, as village attorney, to fill currently vacant position for the remainder of the official village year effective July seventh, twenty twenty, through noon December seventh, twenty twenty. And whereas the board recognizes that a position of attorney is of it, of a nature typically available to be called upon at any time and at any day to perform duties on behalf of the village, including activities that may occur outside of the Village of Suffering Municipal Building Offices. And whereas, if Robert V. Magrino Esquire participates in the New York State Retirement System, he shall be required annually to record and recertify work activities for a period of three consecutive months in accordance with Chapter three, one, five dot four, Section A, Record of Work Activities of the New York State Retirement System Regulation, Regulation on Reporting for Elected or Appointed Officials. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor hereby appoints Robert V. Magrino Esquire as village attorney effective July seventh, twenty twenty, through and including December seventh, twenty twenty, at an annual salary of fifty thousand dollars. A motion to approve the foregoing appointment was made by trustee, who?
Barone.
Trustee Barone, and seconded by?
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. Thank you. I just wanna really, um, say, Mr. Magrino has been a dedicated village employee and, uh, planning and zoning board attorney for many years now, and already has been assisting the, assisting us here in the Village of Suffering in, in many legal matters, and I, I thank you and welcome you, and, uh, you're a great compliment to the village. Thank you. All in favor?
And thank you, and thank you to the board for your confidence. I appreciate it, and I wanna continue to do well for the village and, and the board and everybody, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next resolution is accepting the modifications to the engagement letter from Richard Glickel, continuing the retention of council through December seventh, twenty twenty. Do we have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Seconded, trustee Corrigan on the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, well, I wanna thank everyone for attending this evening's virtual, um, board meeting. We hope to see you in the future in person, um, but at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
Motion, trustee Albert, second?
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Thank you. Everyone be safe.